Good afternoon and welcome to the board education meeting for Greeley Island School District 6. This is our work session. It's four o'clock and today is December 11th. I wanted to say 12th, but the meeting will now come to order. And Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll force please?
Director Ozari.
Present.
Director Bentley.
Present.
Director Kambos Pitsi.
Present.
Director Mash.
Present.
Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Norwood.
Present.
Director Sullivan. Six board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. First on our agenda tonight, since we're not doing board photos, and we'll push those back, we do have our calendar review and community engagement. So we do want to look at that and there's something that's highlighted on this for you guys, a lot of what we do. We do have invitation to Greeley West on Friday.
I think that was canceled.
No, that's a mistake. It's not canceled.
Not canceled?
No, it is not canceled. And so Amy will make sure you have it.
Yeah, it came from Teresa and then it got canceled today.
It is still occurring. They're receiving a special recognition from the commissioner, so if we can go, it's a great opportunity to be there.
And so that is, it's still at 10:30 on Friday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. 10:30 on Friday.
And you may want to come a little early.
That's a good idea. Then that will conclude our business for December. Looking into January, we'll start, we have our first board meeting on the 8th, but the thing that's highlighted on your schedule is, or maybe it's just on mine, to remind me, the 17th, we're looking at potentially a work session, or there's some different dates that we have for a board work session. So we need everyone to give us your dates. And so Dr. Pilch, can you tell us exactly what we need here?
I can. Yeah, I sure can. And so after being at CASB and, you know, the productive work we did with Brett Miles, I really felt like, and I think you all were in agreement at CASB, that we should bring Brett back in to do that next session with the board and to bring the protocols that we worked on and the agreements and to bring those forward with the entire board. And so what we have on, if you look in your sack of papers, I'm going to have you do this paper and pencil if you can tonight, or email Amy the next day or so. What you have are Brett's actual available dates in January. And I know we may not have any luck, but if we do, I'm wondering if we can move off of that work session date of the 17th and go with another one of these days. So we could do a full day and do the work with Brett and then also do work with legal counsel on the other legal counsel pieces, or we can look to do a half a day with Brett and bring legal counsel back at another time for a half a day. We could go into the month of February, but we do have the three days in February for negotiations. And so I was a little concerned about trying to pull you out of your responsibilities in February, but it's not till the end of the month. February 28th and March 1st is when we have negotiations scheduled right now, which, you know, requires all of us. So if maybe during dinner, you can take a little time and look at this and if you can check if you're available morning or afternoon, or both, on those dates that are there. And if you're not, just saying no. I mean, no, 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 if we really can't make work. I know with work schedules and things, this is, you know, I know that's tough to do. I do think, I mean, we could look to an evening, but I think we probably need three or four hours and after you put in a full day, it's hard, you know, to engage in that kind of dialogue like what we engaged in with Brett down at our work session last week. So that's what that is. Do you have any questions about that? Or any recommendations, anything I need to be thinking about that I'm not thinking about that might help us?
Everybody think they can get this done in the next couple of minutes?
I'm going now.
We'll pass them over to Ms. Lemon.
I know some of you may need to request time off and so if you need to say, you know, should work, but I have to check with work, I understand that too. What we want to do is try and pin Brett down before he gets booked for other things since he's worked to give us this availability. Make sure your name is on yours. Did you write your name on it, everybody? Michael's the student who didn't put his name on his homework.
All the time. Always wanted to see how it did before I put my name on it.
Those days, I just had to request them all. Another senior citizens getting upset if they don't.
All right, so that's the, that is that half-day work session that was originally scheduled for the 17th. Also know the 25th, we do have success in six awards and, Corin, I don't know if you've ever been to these, you might have been to these as a teacher.
Probably.
Yeah, so it's a fun night. Brenda, I don't know, you've been, you weren't here last year. Yeah, these are, I'm assuming everybody else has made one before, but this is, yeah, it's a really fun night where teachers get to dress up and be honored and chosen and so. And then the next thing on our agenda that's not just our regular board meetings is our negotiations. And just to confirm, Dr. Pilch, we're still looking at the 28th through the 1st?
Yes. So this year, we have a 29th day in February, I believe.
Yes.
So it's the three days. And on the 1st, you very likely will not be required to be there the entire day. We typically finish up with the board around midday, you know, finish with lunch with the board on that last day. And then we have, we typically let the negotiations subcommittees begin kind of planning, or the chairs or committees begin planning. So it may very well be done at noon on the 1st.
And maybe interviewing earlier than that.
Oh, yeah. So thank you for that, Annette. Diane Groves, who is our facilitator for negotiations, will want to interview you all sometime the week before that or that, early in that week. She'll want, those of you she's not met face to face, she'll really want to meet face to face if she can. Those of you she's met, a phone call may suffice with her, but she'll want to check in with all of us who are on the negotiations team, staff included, prior to the actual negotiations beginning the morning of the 28th. We'll have more information for you on those days and the location for those negotiations as we get a little bit closer.
All right, thank you. Dr. Pilch, I don't know if there's anything, notice the Success Foundation breakfast, get that on your calendar ahead of time too. But, yeah, we will be doing school visits, I imagine, putting those on there in the near future.
We will. I think Amy has the schools from me and is just checking with principals and checking dates and so you'll be getting a schedule for school visits for second semester. Will start popping up on your calendar very soon.
Okay. All right, moving right along to our committee review. So you have also in your stack the committees, the school assignments that we have, where we are ambassadors for the district. You can check those just real quickly, make sure everything looks okay on that. Please don't, just make sure that there's no reason you can't be at these schools. There may be schools that you were hoping for, but...
Sorry, back to the calendar.
Oh, sure.
I think, sorry, the last two dates for March there, those are meant to be a Monday, right? Which I think is the 25th.
Which ones are you looking at?
3/26, 24.
Must not be a Monday on the calendar.
Well, yeah, they should be 3/25. That's typo.
Thank you.
The Success Foundation also, I think, is the 25th.
It is, on the Monday as well.
Thank you, Brenda. So school assignments, again, when this gets shuffled because we had a, it's our first meeting with Mr. Ozari, our first meeting with Ms. Mash as our vice president, our first meeting without Ms. Pappas. So everything gets shuffled around a little bit, at some different schools, which is always good. Make sure that we...
President Matthews, those have not been shared with principals yet.
Okay.
We'll share them this week in their weekly memo, so if you'll just, you know, give us till next week before you reach out, if you're going to reach out to your schools.
Okay.
And then we'll also, Ms. Lemon will also reshare the calendar with you that has the second semester events on it.
Will that have school visits on it as well?
Not on that calendar, no. That calendar's the one that, where it has your individual schools' events. Your school visits will pop up on your, for your board calendar.
I'm going to assume all our, all our school assignments where we are ambassadors, that looks good to everybody? I mean, looks acceptable? I'm going to move right on.
Ambassadors, is that a new terminology?
That's a good word, right? I don't know. It's supposed to be.
Didn't like the way liaisons...
Nobody likes liaisons. That's a misnomer for...
I do recall somebody making that comment. I was just using ambassadors till we find a better term.
That's a good word.
Change it to ambassadors.
Because that was off the top of my head, so there's probably a better word out there.
Michael's late, oh, me too.
Well, I think that's a good word.
It's really good, because it's more like, yeah, we're bringing stuff to, we're representing the board in their presence is less of a...
All right, well, moving, moving right along to our committee assignments, those are before you as well. Again, double-check those, make sure you're good with different, if you're assigned.
President Matthews, I'll just remind the board, there was some question about the Greeley Dream Team Board, School Board assignment, and Ms. Pappas serves on that through June 30. And then we'll see if the Dream Team asks for us to provide a board member...
These other boards, they invite us as individually, right? That's not something we get to assign.
Right. These are, these are all committees that are district-driven assignments. The list you have is.
Right. It's small, but these are important. Not hearing any problems with that. So we're going to be significantly ahead of schedule because we didn't do pictures, but we're now on to our financial audit presentation. And so invite our finance team. What was it, John Paul?
John Paul is here.
Maybe, do you guys want to sit there?
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great. And you can move here, that's great.
Thank you.
My name's John Paul LaChevalier. I've met most of you before and with previous presentations with Clifton Larson Allen, or CLA, the external financial statement auditors for the district. Happy to be able to present this year's annual financial statement audit and single audit and the results of that. So we'll go through, it's a...
John Paul, excuse me for a moment.
Sure.
I wonder if either you or Megan or Mandy, for the benefit, we have a couple board members, I think, that have not been through this before. So can we just do a little set around why we do this, when we do it?
You bet.
What it is.
Yep.
And whomever that is.
I'd be happy to.
Thanks, Megan.
So this is an annual process. It is a requirement in state law and also of the many federal grants that we get, that we go through both the financial audit and the single audit, which is the compliance around single or grants that we get from the federal government. So this happens every year. This generally starts in June or July with what they call interim work, and they start looking at transactions and requesting information then. And they look at our policies and procedures, how we handle things, our internal controls that you'll hear a lot, to make sure that we have solid processes in place. And then taking that into consideration, they'll do kind of a risk analysis and they'll identify maybe areas that might be a higher risk than others, and they'll kind of dig in on those higher-risk areas. And I'll let John Paul talk about what they identified this year as kind of a high-risk area. They also like to do some kind of surprise testing and so, so that we don't get used to everything that they ask for every year. They throw some surprises at us to make sure that we are on our toes and doing what we say. And so it's a lot of, a lot of work, a lot to it. This is really Mandy's baby. She takes this from June all the way till this weekend. This is still a work in progress until today. So with that, I will kind of turn that back over to you, John Paul, and if there's questions at the end, we'll be happy to answer them.
Sure. And this is for the benefit of the boards, so if there are any questions or comments, things that make sense to discuss at any point during the presentation, please feel free to interrupt me and would be happy to discuss in more detail. So to start off, I did want to just briefly outline what that audit includes and what it doesn't include. Our focus is, and the financial statements for the district are about a little over 160 pages. So we won't go into too much depth into all of that, we'll look at just some big-picture items. And again, if there's any questions on specifics, we'd be happy to go into that, but otherwise I don't think you want me reading 160 pages to you. So what the audit includes is we're doing all of the testing procedures that Megan mentioned to make sure that the amounts presented and the disclosures surrounding those amounts are correct within the financial statements. So materially correct based on the size of the district, making sure that, you know, a small amount, one way or the other, is not going to significantly impact someone's view of the financial statements. Making sure that all of the disclosures, so the wording surrounding that, is all accurate and fairly presents the financial position. What that, how, the way that I normally look at that is that as the auditors, we're really, if you look at the financial statements as a book and the district as the author, we're kind of the editors, making sure that everything is accurate and then if there's something that doesn't read correctly or doesn't, isn't quite right, that that's updated and presented correctly. One thing is that we are not specifically looking for fraud. So if we were, our audit procedures would be designed differently. So that is something that if we do come across any concerns about fraud, which we didn't for this year's audit, but if we did, that would be reported to you, but it's not something that we're specifically designing procedures to look for. We're also considering internal controls, meaning is there proper review and oversight by various individuals? Does no one individual have too much involvement within a process? We're looking at that, but our audit report is not specifically addressing internal controls. It's really making sure, again, that those financial statements are accurate. So with that, to kind of give a brief overview, we have the financial statement audit, which includes all of the financial statements themselves and those disclosures, as well as the single audit. And that is one audit over all federal awards. So we'll look specifically at a sample of different awards and make sure that those are correct, both in the amounts presented as well as the compliance requirements. Essentially, the federal government puts out a list of procedures that they want financial statement auditors to perform, and so we follow what the federal government says to do. And then we did just the results from that. We did not have any findings related to those federal awards, which can be very difficult to do. The federal government is very nitpicky on things and they're very black and white. Something's either correct or it's not, even if it seems like the most trivial thing. If it's not correct, it gets written up into the report, so kudos to the district for that. We did have one recommendation relating to capital assets, which we'll discuss briefly in just a minute. So I know I said the financial statements are about 160 pages. Was going to try and boil down the big-picture trends for that into just a couple of slides. One other thing to note is that our audit is designed to make sure that the financial statements are accurate, but we're not giving an opinion over whether that's good or bad, if you will. That's really the board's decision to make on kind of the trajectory and making sure that if there's adjustments of, you know, how spending needs to happen or what the financial position should be, that's really kind of outside of the scope. We can give a little bit of context to how that looks to other districts, but overall, if that's good or bad is really up to the board. So the district presents, like most governments are required to, two sets of financial statements. The first includes long-term items, and that would include the bonds, the capital assets, such as the bills... such as the buildings, and then the pension and OPEB information that's required to be presented by PARA. So, with this, you'll see that as of five years ago, it was about negative 300 million, which would be very concerning if you were a business, but a lot of that relates to PARA at that time and how enormous that net pension liability that was required to be presented. That has decreased as PARA's overall liability has decreased, and there's been some legislative changes to reduce that liability into the future. And that has had an impact, as you can see, over the five years now into a positive net position.
John Paul, wasn't that about a new requirement in how we, in what we had to report and what we had to consider as what could be a possible loss, right? Because PARA didn't have...
Right. That's what's new. I can't remember exactly when, but...
Sure. So, it came into effect around 2015, that this became a requirement for all governments to present, if they're part of a defined benefit pension plan such as PARA, that that be presented as a liability on the financial statements. Prior to that, it was just a disclosure, so just a written paragraph farther on, but now it's present, required to be presented as an actual number. That number is not something that the district has any direct control over. If you wanted to try and pay that down, you couldn't. It's something that really just reflects, this is the expected liability, the expected impact over the next 30-plus years, either in decreased benefits, increased contributions, or other types of changes that would need to be made in order for the pension plan to continue operations. And so, what you can see here is that as of about five years ago, that pension plan was in a very difficult spot with a giant pension liability. This was because they were projected to not be able to continue funding within a 30-year time span, which triggered some of the way that they were doing the calculations to change, and that net pension liability number to be very significant. That was decreased, again, due to some of those changes, and has remained kind of around the same level, though there is a way that that, according to government accounting standards, that gets smoothed into the district's impact. So, that giant decrease between fiscal year 18 and fiscal year 19, that smoothed into these numbers, which is why, even though there was a huge decrease there, it's a much smoother impact, as you can see, on the net position. But a lot of the impact of, or the reason why this is trending the way that it is, is relating to the pension information. The net OPEB liability, and OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, this is also related to PARA. I bring this up mainly because you don't normally see the words "OPEB" just around in life, and so if you were to see this on the financial statements and wonder what it is, this also relates to PARA. It's an additional subsidy provided for healthcare benefits to retirees, so just pointing out that that's what that is. But overall, it's much smaller than the net pension liability. So, on the other side, there's also this current set of financial statements, which is really more of a one-year view of the financial information for the district. And this is going to be a lot more similar to what you would budget for to spend each year. This is the general funds, fund balance. So, if you take the assets minus liabilities, this is what's left over at the end of each of the fiscal years. And so, really, that yellow amount would be the amount that is unassigned or able to be spent on anything that the district would want to spend it on. So, seeing that increase over the last five years would be a strengthening or, you know, a positive indication of the district's overall financial position. Obviously, that also needs to be offset with academic achievement, you know, teachers being satisfied with working at the district, the conditions of the buildings, and, you know, this doesn't present the entire story, as I know all of you know, but this would, again, be a positive indication of the financial position of the district. This shows the five-year trend for all funds, so this would be, again, the assets minus the liabilities for all funds. The general fund would be the main operating fund. This would include everything else, particularly the capital projects and the debt reserve funds that would be used for future capital expenditures, as well as to pay off the debt. You can see between fiscal year 19 and fiscal year 20, that's when the bond was issued and when there was a significant increase in the amount of assets held. And on this short-term basis, since you're not budgeting to pay off all of the bonds at once, that shows a significant increase, but obviously, the other set of financials would include that as a liability. So, this shows that the district is in a relatively stable position over the last couple of years, and again, that big increase relates to the bond issuance. Any questions or comments on the financials? Otherwise, next up would be discussing the federal audit, audit over federal programs. All right, moving to the single audit results. So, the single audit, again, is the audit procedures performed over federal programs. This year, the district, or I should say, the fiscal year, so that's ending as of June 30th, so we are months past that, but this was a little bit less than 50 million in federal awards that the district received. As part of our required testing, we looked at two of those programs. That would be the ESER funding, as well as the child nutrition cluster, which includes the National School Lunch Program, which is the most significant within that, but also includes breakfast, fresh fruits and vegetables, et cetera. So, again, there's a long list of requirements that were needed to look at as part of this audit, and pleased to report that we did not have any internal control or compliance issues relating to those two programs. We do have also included would be one of the letters that has, we refer to it as our governance communication, which is our required communication to the board. It's very templated, so if you read it, it seems kind of like legalese, mainly because it is. So, just to summarize, some of the things that would be more unique or different this year, there was a new accounting policy referred to, so GASB would be the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. GASB Statement Number 96 required changes to the way that software subscriptions were required to be presented. So, if you saw Mandy at any point in the last year sobbing or crying, it probably was because she was working with this standard. The overall impact of the financial statements was not that significant, but it was a significant amount of effort to get all of that information together to be able to present it within the financial statements, the way that it's required to be after that change. You'll also see in here two uncorrected misstatements. Most of the time, the question is, if you know about these misstatements, why didn't you correct them? So, we'll spend just a minute talking about that. The first one is a correction relating to fiscal year '22, so the previous fiscal year. That was items that were recorded twice, found during fiscal year 2023, and corrected during the year. When we say uncorrected, we mean that we're not restating last year's financial statements. So, that would be, again, corrected as of the end of fiscal year 2023, as it should be, but not going back and restating it, which would basically just be a lingo difference in how it's presented within the financials. There was also a little over 3 million that relates to capital construction that occurred during fiscal year 2023 that was not included. It wasn't paid yet as of the end of the year, and that's why it wasn't identified. And so, the district has made the decision that that 3 million's not going to significantly impact those long-term financial statements, and so those will just be added to the financial statements in fiscal year 2024. So, that's just a timing of when those will be shown. And again, since they hadn't been paid yet, the overall impact of the financials is not significant. There were no other adjustments, so that's what our one best-practice recommendation that we have in a separate letter. It relates to those two items and just improving the internal controls surrounding that. So, there's three levels of kind of severity for audit findings, and we believe that to be the lowest severity. So, again, not overly significant or material. And there's, again, a whole bunch of other wording in that letter, but nothing else that I think kind of rises to the level of additional explanation. So, overall, probably a relatively boring presentation, which is like, in my view, the highest form of praise that a finance department can receive is to be called boring during the audit, so... But if there's any questions, comments, or discussion, we'd be happy to have that now.
Any questions, board members?
John Paul, I'm just curious. I'm sure they're thinking of questions, so I'll get the juice going. I'm curious. You opened with, you know, you're not, the audit is not looking for fraud, but it usually is through an audit that a district is tipped off, right? That there could be some fraud going on? I mean, it is also in practice, a lot of checks and balances in place in our day-to-day operations that would catch that as well, but...
Sure. So, actually, the reason I mention that is, financial statement audits are actually generally terrible at detecting fraud unless it's really...
Really blatant.
Blatant, rampant, something that's happening that's kind of obvious when someone looks at it. Most fraud is detected by someone internal and by having that structure of good internal control, and that's why that's something that we focus on, is making sure that that structure is in place, because us finding it would be generally like a needle in a haystack, but if there's the good structure in place, then that's much more likely to prevent those types of structures.
You are, so you are looking at structure and evaluating structure, correct?
Correct. And one other thing, I guess, maybe that would be helpful to mention is that, as much as this seems like it's only a tiny bar compared to what the negative was previously, to be honest, we work with a number of school districts and charter schools. There's not many districts that have a positive net position at the end of the year. Most of the time, that net pension liability drowns out any balance that's being held. So, actually, the district being able to present a positive ending net position is pretty impressive.
So, that is a question. Why is that for us versus other school districts?
So, that would be, I mean, the revenue that's coming in, the assets that are still being held compared to the ending liabilities. In terms of the trajectory of that, I'll turn it over to Megan or Mandy to speak more on kind of the thought process. Obviously, that's a decision point to be made of how much to be retained and how much to be spent each year. A lot of that's relating to future capital, but again, I won't step on toes there.
Yeah, that's a really good question and something that we talk a lot about, especially in negotiations, and it really does come down to this question of, we want to make sure that we have a solid financial foundation, but we also know that we need to invest in the programs and the people in terms of, you know, retention, recruitment, paying people appropriately, all of those things. So, we need to find that balance of where are we comfortable financially, if a solid financial foundation, but then also investing the funds that we need to into the programs that we need to invest. So, it's a, it is kind of a tight rope to watch, and there's not a right answer. So, it's something that this group always gets to have some input into in negotiations, and it's something that we can talk about. It might be time to start spending into fund balance as a possibility. The challenge is, you really should not be spending fund balance for ongoing expenses because it's one-time money. So, that one-time expense, those are the things that we need to identify and be very intentional about. We're going to spend this money for this contract, this capital project, five more buses, whatever it might be, that we need to be thoughtful about. We're taking that money out of our savings account, and it's not going to be replenished unless we do something different.
So, real estate purchases are a really good use of fund balance, and one-time expenses, like when we use fund balance to pay, you know, for free meals for all students last school year, those are good, you know, really good use for fund balance. As you all know, we're currently looking at some real estate purchases of land, and we would very likely look to fund balance to pay for that. Also, you know, as we, as we finish out the bond issue, if there's projects that maybe we're not in the bond to begin with, but we really wished we had been able to do them, like a few more elementary classrooms or preschool classrooms perhaps, that would be a good use of fund balance as well. And so, the other piece I want to share is that we've been really cognizant of the ESER dollars in at the end of this school year. And so, you know, we will need to make some decisions around some things we've been paying for with ESER dollars, and do we look to fund balance for some of those things? Again, a lot of that is people and programs, so you don't want to continue to take from save, your savings account to pay ongoing costs. But maybe if there's things we want to do one time, then that's a good place to look to do some of that.
And from one of the early slides, is it 21.8 million of ESER that we won't be having in the future?
That sounds correct. It's been averaging about 20 million a year. Yes, it's a big number.
Big number.
Going back to Mr. Rosari's question, there was no change in the accounting that resulted in, I mean, the accounting standards. I kind of got that picture. Okay, great. That's just just bond dollars and potentially ESER dollars that have come in that have yet to be spent.
Well, and then, as you all know, we talked last year about, unfortunately, there was a significant budget savings due to open positions in the district. So, you know, that's not a desirable state to be in. We don't want, you know, three or four million dollars' worth of open positions, but that has not, that has become more typical than not. And we're talking in all areas, from classroom teachers to bus drivers to custodians to parent professionals, to support staff, administration, just like everyone else. Everyone's trying to hire.
Other questions?
Your recommendations on the recording of those couple $3 million transactions, that's more probably just like a difference between cash and accrual, and then when they was expensed versus when the cash was spent, right?
That's correct.
Like the end-of-year transactions type deal?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
Any other questions for John Paul? Or for Mandy, or for Megan?
I just have a comment. Just, I appreciate the way you described it as being the editor of the book or whatever. That just really helped me kind of understand exactly, I mean, I know that we're just looking for errors and like systemic, you know, issues of the way we keep track, but that just made a lot of sense to me, and I will share that when people ask me about, well, what is this audit about? Like, well, it's just editing. It's great. So, yeah, I appreciate that, and I'm so glad you guys are boring. So, thanks for doing a great job.
Sounds like there wasn't a whole lot to edit, so that's...
There's that, too.
Yeah. So, unless there are other comments, I will just say, great job, Mandy, Megan. Thank you, John Paul, for being here tonight. We always enjoy seeing you, so we'll see you again next year, I'm sure.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, we keep communicating time. That's a good thing on our financial audit presentation. If we were going on and on, it probably wouldn't be boring. So, we are now to our debrief of the work session, and so... We'll start with Mr. Ozori. We'll start with Dr. Campus Pitsi.
So, excited about the new school assignments. It'll give me a chance to, yeah, to get to know some of the other schools in our district more closely. I do still owe Heath Middle School a personal visit, so I will be going to their parent-teacher conference on January 18th, because I never made it to anything besides our official, our official school visits this last year. So, yeah, excited about those, excited about being the new CASB legislative representative. I've mentioned in other visits that I like policy, and so this will be fun for me to learn that role and see if I want to join the CASB board one day. Yeah, and thank you, Megan and team, for great work. I know we've had tons of construction, so, you know, it looks just like a really small misstatement or whatever they called that. Yeah, and just really proud of our finances, and I really liked Dr. Pilch's insight into how we might not be as positive if we talk about other ways, our balance, if we talk about other ways we might want to spend the money, and your insight on how the type of spending we would do should just be one-time kind of spending as opposed to ongoing spending. That's valuable for me to hear. Yeah, thanks.
Mr. Noah?
I would agree that looking at the new school assignments is good, ready to get started. I actually know a couple of the principals, so I'm looking forward to reaching out and connecting with them, and always amazes me when we have finance people that are so sharp that it's boring, and that's a great thing, so I appreciate all their work. And congratulations as well, too, to our new vice president.
Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, same. The budgets are always interesting to me with the, with the finishing of the bond and looking forward and just trying to plan that path forward, so it's good to see we're healthy and excited to kind of keep moving forward in the right direction. So excited for the holidays and our new assignments, and I'm going to make it a New Year's resolution to do better at my school assignments, so I'll be in touch.
Mr. Ozori, you've probably gotten the gist of what we're doing so far, just reflecting on this meeting and any comments you have, positive or negative things that we need to improve.
Sure. As a new board member, I just want to remind everybody that I am not as quick with understanding protocols as you might be, so any help along those lines would be appreciated, when to reach out to schools, when for others to reach out to me. For instance, my wife would be glad to know that I'm on the wellness committee. I need as much help as possible in that area, but to know how that operates as well. And I knew when I was a staff member that our leadership team in the finance department was great. Back then, they kept things very clear and helpful to me personally when I was in the classroom, and I see that that has continued. And I really appreciate the hard work and effort. When I was on the mill levy oversight committee, I also appreciated that, very open and forthright as far as what we're doing as a school district, and it's great to hear that we're in a good place, and I want to see that continue into the future. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mash?
Yes, thank you very much for the audit and explaining how that all works. I kind of already said that. Thank you to our finance team for just being so diligent, and as I've mentioned before, it always impresses me that Megan and her team understand that the dollars equal people, equal programs, have just a robust understanding of what our budget actually is doing, and it's not just making the numbers line up, it's understanding what would, what would change if we had to, you know, make cuts or things like that. So I appreciate that. I'm excited to see what the district accountability committee is like. I got a little confused and told Reagan that I was going to be the new CSR rep, so I hope in my four years, I get to do that at some point. But I'll be working with parents, and Mike will be working with the students, so that's exciting. Two things that just came to my mind about CASB, so I apologize, I think I wasn't fully paying attention to the elections that they were having. So they're, in region four, I believe there are four seats, because we're a pretty large region, and so they did elect two two-year seats, but there is a three-year seat that is just open. Nobody was interested in it at this point. So I assume that that current CASB board would then appoint someone to that position if somebody was interested. So, yeah, I can look into additional, like, is that actually happening? Is that, is there a timeframe on that? If anyone's interested in that, I think for new board members, it's probably fine to get your feet wet with this board work before you move on to CASB board work, but it's a great way to understand the, I mean, sort of collective bargaining or just our collective voice as state, as a state board group. So if you, if you want, I can help to look into that more. And another thing that just came to mind is, so during the CASB meeting, when they were voting for the board members, they did votes of acclamation, and so I think we were a little bit confused about what that meant for us, and so they said a vote of acclamation meant that they could vote on multiple candidates at the same time. So we still said aye and nay, but they were all unopposed candidates, so anyway, for future reference, that's something I learned. And I think that's it.
I don't have a whole lot to add. Again, congratulations to Megan and to Mandy. I know Mandy will sleep better. This is the culmination of a lot of work on your, both of your parts and your department's part, so thank you for getting, for making this a boring meeting, because it might not be, but it might not be, but it always is, and I do appreciate, yeah, just the fact that it, that it always is and the great job that you guys do. So congratulations on that. Thank you, Dr. Pilch, for helping us try to find a date that we can all get together. I know that is, that's very difficult with this group. It's a hard-working group in a lot of places and hard to get everybody's schedules to align, but thank you for, for doing that and for bringing Brett Miles back. Excited for that, and...
I wondered, President Matthews, on that note, and we, this would take board action, of course, but I wondered if, it looked like a lot of you were available on the 22nd, so I did wonder if maybe we would consider not holding the meeting on the 22nd and doing a work session that day, possibly. So it's just something we, you and Ms. Mash and I can visit about and consider. The 23rd was also favorable, I think, for many of you, and so, you know, maybe we, we talked about doing the business, that second business meeting in January, and so I'll look at the, you know, the agenda list in cabinet tomorrow and look ahead at those meetings to see what looks like might be slated for that meeting, and if that looks like that might be a possibility or not.
Okay, sounds great. Natalie, sorry, anything you have to say in words of conclusion, reflection?
No, I think it was just, like I've always said, it's very interesting hearing about different things that go on in the district, and one of them now being the financial audit, so it was just interesting to hear how the district is spending the money and stuff, and then also having you as our ambassador for CSR. I am very happy that you took on that role for us, so I am very appreciative, and I know all of our members are also going to be.
Well, thank you. I have big shoes to fill coming behind Ms. Pappas, but I'll do my best, so. Anything else, Dr. Pilch, that you had?
No.
Okay, all right. Well, great meeting, everyone. Our work session is adjourned, and we'll see everyone back at 6 o'clock for our business meeting.